Call on order, the February 22nd, Harris Township Planning Commission meeting. The first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the January 10th meeting. Does anybody have any comments on it or wish to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Move to approve!
Okay. Motion to approve. Can I get a second from anyone out there in Zoom land? Okay. Okay, all in favor of approving the January 10th meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
She's behind a little bit.
Yeah, she's not voting against the minutes.
Okay. Okay, that motion's approved. Now we have time for a public comment. Is there any public comment items on the agenda tonight for anything that's not on the agenda? And by the way, can you hear me okay with this on me? Okay. And, okay, then we'll have the approval of the agenda. Looks pretty clear, I do have additions, Amy, right?
Move to approve.
Okay, have a motion to approve the agenda? Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda for tonight? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna have to pause a little bit.
Yep. There's a little lag.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Planning Commission business. And we have a couple site plans. First one is the 420 Bull Avenue site plan. Do we want a presentation on that?
Yeah, Todd will take that, he's on the Zoom.
Go ahead, Todd.
On December 1st of 2020, staff received a site plan to review from a perspective less see of the former beer distributor property on Bull Avenue. The less see proposes to establish an automobile-related business on the property and must complete the change in use zoning permit process to do so. Actual submission of a change in use zoning permit application must be preceded by staff approval of the site plan, in this case, since the FEMA map floodplain exists within 100 feet of the north property line of the subject property. The zoning ordinance requires review of such site plans by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors prior to action by staff on the site plan. Five total reviews of this site plan have been completed to date, the most recent of which was included with the agenda, as well as a copy of a section of the site plan showing the existing building and existing proposed parking for the project. We didn't have extra copies of the full-size site plan, that's why you only received the biggest copy of a portion of it that we could provide. On the wall behind you, the top one, is the full-size copy of the plan, if anybody had a chance to look at it before the meeting there. No additions or exterior alterations to the existing buildings are proposed at this time with the change in use. Most comments have been addressed at this point, which is why the plan was added to the Planning Commission agenda for this meeting. The Planning Commission can provide any recommendations they deem to be appropriate. Staff anticipates having the opportunity to review or revise site plan prior to the March 14th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. The recommendation is, this is a discussion item, the way the zoning ordinance is set up is, because of the proximity of this property and the next site plan property to the floodplain, the ordinance says that the Planning Commission Board has to review it. Neither one of them has any ability or responsibility for approving or denying anything. It's just a review on both of your parts, so if you have anything that you want the applicant to consider as an addition to the existing site plan, please feel free to offer that.
And I've been asked by the Zoom people if you guys could speak up a little bit.
Okay. So they were having a little problem?
Yeah, I got a text.
Okay. So why are you at this point, we're just seeking comments, no action from the Planning Commission, so I'll just start with the Planning Commission members, so if anyone from Planning Commission has comments, start with us.
Todd, what's the riparian regulation on this?
There really is none, because the riparian buffer regulations apply at the time of subdivision or land development. So we can't require anything as far as riparian buffers concerned.
So it's strictly to those two specific instances? It's not like this would be not considered like a redevelopment or something to that nature where it would have to be part of that regulation, that ordinance?
Yeah, what they would basically have to do is propose something that triggers our Chapter 11, our subdivision or land development. Now, if they were proposing a second building on the property or something like that, that raises the level of subdivision or land development plan, all of that stuff would come into play as well as a bunch of other stuff, and we'd follow the typical process you see when plans come before you. Site plans are a little different, they're by design a little less complicated and a little bit easier for the applicants to take care of normally.
Okay. I'm gonna bring up-
I have a question.
Sure.
Todd, am I understanding this map correctly, that there's just a single bay here and they're using the existing structure? No new structures have been added?
Yeah, they're not proposing, to vets of our knowledge, any exterior additions to the existing building. My understanding from a couple years ago when it started was, and how we got involved in it was, the less sees tried to get a building permit from Center Region Code to do interior renovations. Whether they were gonna add an additional bay or bays, or if they were just gonna reapportion the inside of the building, I really don't know. We don't get involved in the building permit process, but at that point, we told them, if they are changing the use, they have to go through our process before they go through the code process, and that's led us to where we are today.
Okay, thank you. That was helpful, that we are really not reviewing it for building, but for just a repurposing of a space?
Right.
Okay.
Hi, this is Chuck, I've got a question. Isn't there, I'm looking at the section along East Main Street, it says future addition.
That's the other site plan, Chuck, that's the Bollesburg Car Company plan, you're gonna wanna look at the smaller copy that should have, did you get an agenda packet?
Yeah, I did. I went right to the big map, because that was the cool one, so, sorry.
No, no, but that's something we'll talk about in the next debate.
Hey, Todd, is there any change in impervious coverage proposed for the site?
There is, and you might be able to tell from the review comments that we're trying to narrow down what that is. The impervious coverage limit's gonna fall far below what the Village Commercial District limit is. I think they're adding some impervious coverage with this proposal, because they're increasing the parking spaces, but I think it's still gonna fall far beneath the district limit.
Does it kick in any water quality criteria or any capture prior to going to the stream?
I don't think so. Typically, whenever we've had site plans, those aren't something that rise to the level that our township engineer gets involved in stormwater management support.
I'm gonna raise one question for Todd. This applies both to this plan and the next plan on the agenda as well for the bank building for site. I was asking if the required parking and if there's any differentiation between the required parking for customers and the parking that will be used for vehicle storage or vehicle display of the cars. So I'll ask Todd if you could maybe just provide an explanation of the township's regulations on that.
Sure. Basically, as you guys know, and we talked about some of the parking regulations and how we come about deciding what they should be, whenever we talk about the Village Commercial Zone District, for those of you that are on the Planning Commission, then we do some research, and parking regulations are basically based upon a number of factors, including the square footage on the inside of a property, you know, the intensity of the use, and a lot of other things that we've talked about. Our ordinance specifically does not have any language that deals with the provision of parking spaces separated by customer use and separated by, you know, other uses. I actually had a brief email exchange with Mark today about that, because he did a lot more research on parking regulations when we were writing the Village Commercial Regulations than I did, and he couldn't remember researching any zoning ordinances, and he looked at a number of them, that did exactly that, that said that you have to separate customer parking from other parking. We have had conversations with the applicant for this particular site plan about what spaces are gonna be reserved for customer parking, and you could probably see, if you look close enough, there are some spaces that are marked specifically for customer parking. So they're aware that we'd like to see some, you know, sort of unofficial dedication of spaces to customer parking, that we don't wanna see all the parking taken up, and as that applies to the second, I almost hate to go there, but as that applies to the second site plan that we're talking about, it's sort of the same situation, but different. In the case of the second one, they've got more parking on the, you know, the lot that the former bank building, way more parking than they'd be required for the use that's taking place, so since the businesses are owned by the same people and they're right across the street, it's not inconceivable that they would be able to share parking if they wanted to do so. In the case of this particular site plan, the 420 Bull Avenue, there were, I think the notes on the plan say they're required to have 19 spaces, and they're providing 25 plus two accessible parking spaces, so they actually are providing more parking than is required, so we don't feel that parking is gonna be particularly an issue on either one of these properties, but to Kent's point, our ordinance doesn't have any language that separates our customer parking from other required parking.
Okay, so in a nutshell, the township doesn't really, the regulations don't differentiate between customer parking and the vehicle display parking, and we're just leaving it to the business owner to make sure that they manage that, to make sure that there is adequate parking for customers when they come in. And that's what apply both to this site and to that one on the agenda.
Yeah, I think generally what you said is a pretty fair statement, you know, Kent and I sent some emails back and forth about this this morning. What I explained, one of the things I explained in the emails is that this is sort of self-reason. I think business owners should, particularly ones that are selling cars on properties or something else that's taking up considerable area on the property, have to realize that if they fill all their spaces with vehicles or whatever it is they're selling, people aren't gonna come to their business, because they have no place to park. And I, in talking to Mark earlier today, I have to say that I've never been on a car lot where I thought that the public parking was abundant. And most of the time, you're trying to find a place to park, and sometimes you're parking amongst the cars for sale, so I don't think this is necessarily limited to a Harris Township situation. I don't think any ordinances in the region have any specific requirements for customer parking versus other. I might be wrong, but we certainly didn't discover any in our previous research into customer parking.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions on this particular site plan? Okay. All right, if not, then I guess you have comments and, not a whole lot of it, but you have something that needs to be satisfied with the supervisors, so we can go ahead and then move on to the next item, which is the, which is the bank site, which is, I guess we're calling that the Bollesburg Car Company site plan.
Right, most of the first paragraph of that particular agenda item is the same. I'd say the only difference is that on February 7th of this year, we received from architect Paul S. Layer, on behalf of Eric Allen, who, I can't see the audience, he said he was probably gonna show up at the meeting there. Paul submitted that site plan in care of the car company, and it's basically for the same reason that the FEMA floodplain's been 100 feet of the property line. Only one review of that plan has been completed, and copies were included in the agenda, as well as a full plan sheet showing what's existing proposed. The only addition or alteration that's proposed at this time is that the drive-through area for the former bank is gonna be closed, so they have interior space to use for what they're doing there. Small number of comments resulted from the review, we believe they can be addressed in a timely fashion, and I've already spoken to Eric and to Paul Layer about that. The Planning Commission can provide any recommendations they deem appropriate. Again, to address Chuck's comment from earlier, the notation on that plan about a future addition is just that. I think they're letting us know that at some point in the future, that they may be proposing in addition to the building. If they do, and that's simply all it is, it's in addition to that existing building, we'll probably see another site plan. It probably wouldn't rise to the level of subdivision or land development ordinance again, but if for some reason it does, you'll see it in a different form.
Any questions on this site plan? Or comments from Planning Commission? Okay. And this, and again, this one will be used for, as a detail shop, and then the parking area, you know, some of the parking areas will be used for vehicle display as well on this site, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
My question is, I believe it's the Bollesburg Car Company that has been parking cars around the village area in different places, including by the fire hall and Church Avenue, or Church Street. And my question is, with the addition of this property and the redesign of the space, will that continue, the parking of cars around town, or will all the cars now be located on their property?
I don't know the answer to that question, but if Eric is indeed there, perhaps he could answer.
Eric, yeah, Eric's here, Eric, if you wanna go to the microphone, he can pick you up.
At this point, it is our intention to cease leasing the land from the fire department, but we'll see what the future holds. At this point, that is the only off-premise storage location that we have.
Any more questions for Eric? Eric Wise here.
Mr. Baker, I will address your concern about the parking versus, the customer parking versus vehicle-for-sale or service parking. In my humble experience, customers park wherever they want, as close to the vehicle they're looking at as possible, and they leave their car there, and if they're dropping their car off for service, the tendency is to pull up in front of the front door, get out, come in, leave your keys, and walk out, even if there's abundant parking available that's very close walking distance, that's convenient.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have one. Is there anything that we can do with these buffer areas on both of these lots? I know we have that 25-foot buffer zone, it's kind of a mess along there, it would be nice if part of that, and I don't know if we have the ability to do anything, is to plant some product in there that would be more suitable to a flood area, and they might have a chance of buffering the museum and the museums barn in the property from these car lots. Is that a possibility, Todd?
Well, one of the things that we talked, that I talked to Eric specifically about, and I think I also talked to his architect about it, is, and Mark and I discussed this when we were doing the plan review, there is a considerable amount of foliage on both sides of that stream, some of it's on the former bank property and some of it's on the museum property. Our thought was that if they added a note to the plan, you know, recognizing what we talked about earlier, that the riparian buffer regulations don't apply, so we can't really make them do anything. If they wanted to, they could go in and clear all that stuff out if they wanted to, but and plant, you know, the very bare minimum for a riparian, for a buffer yard that the zoning ordinance requires. We asked them to sort of circle that area on the plan and indicate that all the foliage where it exists will be preserved, and do sort of an informal inventory to see if there's any, you know, trees of any substantial size that need to be called out on the plan. I think on this particular plan, there's a small area, as you come up, I guess it's the east property line, where the residential zoning district sort of is abutting the property and that there's nothing planted there, at least not according to the site plan, they will have to plant some stuff in there, but that should be relatively minimal. So I think that's the way staff anticipated that, you know, the buffer yard comments would be addressed.
Just walking down along that stream, I mean, you can notice, as long as, you know, we've been all around here, that it is becoming an erosion problem, which will affect these properties at some time. We had the same thing at a golf course, and got some great advice from Clearwater, and planted material along there where they could, which seemed to keep that in check. But I didn't know, I guess all we can do is ask, but we can't require anything through our buffering regulations?
Now, the buffering regulations aren't really intended, they're not really worded to do anything as far as, you know, stream bank degradation or anything like that, they're simply to assist in, you know, interrupting the visual view from one property and, or properties in a residential zoning district, and those properties in the non-residential districts. So if through their research, they find that they have, you know, a good bit of stuff there that does that, I think that should be enough to meet our ordinance requirements. If there's absolutely, and I should probably take a look at that while there are no leaves on the trees, if there's absolutely nothing within that existing vegetation that provides any screening benefit during the winter months, then they may have to put some stuff in there to provide some winter screening, but we really can't require anything to be planted that would have any effect on the stream bank or anything like that. If what you're saying is true, it'd probably be a good idea for them at some point in the future to address that, but that's a private property issue more than anything.
And Eric, I have a question.
Jeff, Eric, we're definitely gonna be working with Clearwater to make that area over the bank as good and as healthy and as of native as we possibly can, because certainly only good things can come from that.
Eric, this is Chris, this is Chris Gamble, I'm glad to hear you say that, I think that's a really important part of being a steward of those properties, and encourage you to pursue that with all vigor with Clearwater, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you, and thanks, Chris, for the comment. Any other comments?
Yeah, this is Chuck. Now that we're talking about my favorite building. So is it Bollesburg Car Company going into both of those properties, the old bank and the old beer distributor? And are they, so they purchased the bank, but they're leasing the beer distributor property? And all these questions go down to, if it is Bollesburg Car Company, are there plans in the future that they'd want to connect those two properties into one continuous? So what kind of zoning would result in that? Are they gonna be, you know, like paving over or something?
You know, Eric and his group only purchased the bank property, the former beer distributor is still owned by Logan and Mollina Hill, and they are proposing to lease it to a group of people, so it's entirely separate. There is in the Village Commercial Zoning District regulations a requirement that a pedestrian access connect the parking lots for neighboring property, so from, you know, Eric's new bank property to the former beer distributor property, there's gonna have to be a sidewalk connection in the parking lot between, with the two properties. It would be nice if those two things aligned themselves with the neighboring, with each other. Likewise, I believe the beer distributor property is gonna have to show a connection to the east, I think, to the car wash property. So I think those pedestrian connections are required to exist, but there are no other connections that the ordinance requires.
So Todd, you're saying those pedestrian connections are a requirement of staff at this point?
Yes, I think, I think both plan reviews still, I put away my first site plan, plan review, but I think both plan reviews still reference that. Yeah, I think they do.
Okay, other comments? Okay, well, thank you very much, and look forward to seeing this, getting to the supervisors then. So we'll go ahead and move off this. So we'll go ahead and move off this project, off this item, and move on to the utility-scale solar toolkit update.
All right, just one moment here as I get the ability to share my screen.
We should be able to share now.
All right. All right, so tonight, I'm going to take my mask off a little, just so you can hear me a little better. Hopefully, everybody on Zoom can hear okay. I'm going to be providing a presentation on the utility-scale solar toolkit and study that the CRPA has been in the process of completing here over the last two years. One of the things that got this started was there was a request that came into Harris Township from a property owner that had a utility-scale solar provider interested in developing a solar farm on their property. They came to the township. The township doesn't have any regulations that address this use, so it ultimately was sent up to the COG with a request that CRPA look at it, and that was endorsed by the elected officials, that we put together a study as well as a regulatory toolkit. We were specifically asked not to put together a model ordinance, so we didn't do that, but it's a toolkit that provides kind of an overview of how we think these uses could be regulated here in the center region. So the first thing you'll notice is that on the presentation, I'm referring to it as primary scale rather than utility scale. That's because this toolkit and the study is going to address more than one type of solar use. And to be honest, there is no terminology that's universally used across municipalities. Some places call it utility, some cases, places call it grid scale, there's principal scale. So we went with primary scale, just to be a little different, but we're also including more than just the type of solar farm that maybe we're all thinking of. The other thing I'm going to talk about throughout the presentation is PJM. I'll make reference to PJM quite a bit. Just a background, PJM is the, it's a local co-op, that's a transmission co-op, that you need to get approval to connect a solar facility to the grid. It's basically, if you want to build a solar farm, you need to get permission from PJM to connect that to the grid and then distribute your power to the market. So if you don't get that PJM connection, you can't do this. But the, the best part is, since you have to go through one provider, we can get a lot of really interesting data about what's going on throughout the state, and that's what I'm going to talk a little bit about. So, let's see here. Tonight, I'm going to, again, I'm going to talk a little bit about the study that we've been working on. That study's going to include kind of an overview of what these uses are, how these uses are being permitted elsewhere, some existing regulations in the region, and as well as illustrations of how these uses would actually be allowed in, in the municipalities that already permit them here in the center region. And then we have a toolkit that kind of talks about best practices for multiple regulatory approaches, different things that need to be considered by municipalities. So as I mentioned, there's more than one type of solar that we're referring to when we talk about primary scale. The first is kind of your typical utility-scale project, and this is going to be essentially a power plant. That's what these are. They are, are generating power for the wholesale market, no different than a coal-burning or gas-fired power plant. And these are what you're hearing a lot about right now. One of the reasons why it's taken us a while to do this study and toolkit is, it seemed like every month we turned around, there's 15 more webinars to watch and a bunch of new information coming out about leases and, and how, you know, municipalities have to protect themselves. Needless to say, we're kind of at the early stages, I think, of this being handled by a lot of municipalities. Matter of fact, the Penn State Marcella Shale Institute has been putting together a whole series of webinars just about solar, because, very similar to Marcella Shale, folks are having solar providers show up, buying up lease rights, they're getting into contracts, there's a lot of issues to be thought about. So utility solar is the one that, that we're most typically referring to when we talk about primary scale. There is another type that's kind of lingering out there, and that's community solar. And this is a little different. It's a little smaller, the maximum size is only five megawatts, so about 25 to 30 acres. But in these projects, you can actually have a choice to subscribe to that particular local installation. So it could be where you, as a planning commission member, subscribe to a local community solar field somewhere here in the center region or nearby. The key here is that these are not currently permitted in the state of Pennsylvania, but there is a bill that's being considered by the state legislature to permit these, and it's likely that this will be permitted at some point in the future. The, the key here is that both these types of solar, they're probably going to be established in the same types of locations in our communities, and they're going to, from the outside, pretty much look the same. Another thing I wanted to point out is, when I'm talking about this type of solar, we're not talking at all about accessory solar. We've already handled that as a municipality. We have accessory solar permitted through our regulations, so if someone's putting out, you know, solar panels on their, on the roof, solar panels in their yard, on their, in their farm field, or on their business to help supplement their power, that is perfectly, you know, fine and permitted under ordinance differently. This would be, again, the primary use of the land is to generate power for others to use, and that's kind of the key difference. So in the last couple of years, needless to say, these primary-scale solar projects have been on the rise, and this graph here shows just how much it's changed since, you know, about 2018, it really started to climb, and you can see, we've had a lot of projects proposed in terms of overall capacity since that time, and, and it continues to go up. A lot of this has to do with, there's available tax credits that are going to be expiring here at some point, so these developers are coming in trying to get land, get these projects approved, so they can take advantage of the tax credits, because they're definitely very lucrative. You know, as far as throughout the state, you can see here the number of acres needed for the projects that have been proposed. Center County's actually, you know, has quite a number of projects that have been proposed, not as many that have gotten as far along as the one out on, on 45 that we talked about, you know, back in 2020. Though, that project had already gotten the interconnection, but there's a lot that are being discussed and proposed here, to the point that about 4,400 acres would be needed in Center County alone just to provide for those projects. So as you can see, there's a lot throughout the state. Most every county has at least one, and some have quite a bit of land that'll be needed to, to support those uses. And the reason this is happening is that solar, not only are these tax credits available, but just the unsubsidized cost of solar. So even taking all the subsidies away is becoming very competitive. And this green line here on this graph shows that, you know, the cost of utility-scale solar has been on the decline in the last decade, to the point that it's probably going to be one of the most cost-effective forms of electricity production that we can have throughout the country. So there's a lot of benefits to these, which is another reason why I think you're seeing, seeing a rise in them in addition to the cost. First off, it helps to diversify our power grid. We have now power coming from additional sources beyond, you know, hydropower and nuclear and coal. And one of the things that's different about those types of power plants is they are typically located on a water source. Solar can really go anywhere, which also provides additional resilience and security. You don't have all of your eggs in one basket, you don't have that basket in one location, it's spread out. You can have power plants all across the countryside without having to, you know, have them all in one place. I've heard folks say, oh, you know, why don't we just take a 100 by 100-mile area of the, of the desert and put solar there? That would be an easier way to handle it. Well, obviously, if something happens to that facility, we have no power. So there's a benefit here that you can spread out your risk and you can get power generated from additional sources. I don't think anyone's suggesting that solar is going to replace, you know, any other source of power completely, but it's nonetheless going to become an option for, for the country as far as how they, how we generate our power. It helps to meet climate action goals. There's certainly the benefit that landowners are going to get payments from this. Most land is leased. It's very rare that these developers buy the property. And then there's also benefits to water quality and soil improvement. Sometimes they're taking land that might be a brownfield or a site that's not, you know, in the best of shape, and they're improving it by putting a, a facility on it that'll be well-maintained. There, of course, are conflicts, though, with these uses. Certainly, these can cause problems with wildlife corridors. They're normally going to be fenced in a way that's going to prevent wildlife from being able to travel through. They're a NIMBY use, meaning not in my backyard. It's pretty rare that anybody says they are, you know, they want one to move next door. Normally, when, even, even in communities that are, are pro-solar and, and very concerned about climate action, you know, Pam Adams, the sustainability planner, myself have been working on this project, and she dug up some articles, I think it was from the Ithaca, New York area, and they had all these climate action plans, and there was a proposed solar farm, and everybody came out and was opposed to it. So even in the case where they want the solar panels, they don't want it next door. You know, there's certainly concerns about long-term impacts to the land and future use of the land. Will it ever be reverted back to what it was before, or is it going to just, you know, basically push out whatever use is there permanently? And then the last question is, is it really the best use of land? In particular, if there's prime farmland involved, should it be used for solar? So some things we know about primary-scale solar in terms of land requirements. They need to have good solar access, meaning they can't have things basically blocking the sun. They need to have proximity and access to three-phase distribution lines and electrical substations. Flatland is typically preferred, or at least that land with minimal slopes that are well-drained. And then, as I mentioned before, a lot of times, they're going to be looking to lease this land in a long-term basis, possibly with the option to renew. So after 25 years, there's typically an option, they can come in and renew that lease, maybe replace the, the infrastructure that's in there to make it more up-to-date and, and continue with production. So as we did this study, you know, there's really a couple different types of locations where this is commonly, these uses are commonly going to be found. Certainly, large brownfield sites, it's wonderful when they get redeveloped. We don't really have very many good examples of these in the center region, and even in Center County, it's very limited in terms of, of options. Industrial districts is another place where these are commonly permitted. Center region does not have a lot of industrial zoning, and what we do have is very fragmented, typically very small parcels that wouldn't be large enough to support utility-scale solar. Normally, utility scale is going to be 50-plus acres in size. Now, you can have these co-locate on industrial rooftops in some situations, but again, we really don't have large warehouses or anything like that here in the region that would be a prime option for these uses. So that brings us to then the last and probably the most common location for these, and that is in agricultural areas in rural districts. Reason being, they have a lot of open space, a lot of access to sunlight, there's often electrical infrastructure nearby, or it can be installed if need be. This can often help to revitalize particularly economically depressed areas, but it's important to note, it doesn't have to be a depressed area for it to be environmentally beneficial. Here in the center region, if someone's leasing their farm, they're probably going to get more by leasing it to a solar provider than they would to a farmer, probably three to four times as much. So when you're looking at the option of, do I want to lease my farm to a farmer every year for the next however long they want to continue farming my land, or I sign a lease with a solar provider for 25 years and I'm guaranteed $800 per acre for the, you know, duration of the lease, it can also be very lucrative here as well. And it's important to note, the center region has about 72,000 acres of agriculturally-zoned land, so it's probably the most logical location where we would see this here in the region. You know, here in, here in the center region, we have a comprehensive plan. That plan really highlights the importance of preserving agriculture. It's one of our core themes. It also does encourage use of alternative energy, but we don't have any policies specifically related to utility-scale solar. Basically, the concern we had as a staff is allowing these solar uses in rural areas probably conflicts with our agricultural plan policies. We actually did a study back in 2019 about supporting the agricultural industry, and it was acknowledged that these uses could be beneficial in our rural areas, but they really shouldn't be on our prime ag soils. But at the same time, we also have a climate action and adaptation plan that was adopted last year by the Center Region Council of Governments, and it includes the use and encourages the use of renewables. So it is a balancing act of, is there a way for us to kind of do both of these? Protect ag, but at the same time, promote renewable energy. So here in the, in the region, as I mentioned, we do have a lot of rural areas. This map on the left shows all the areas that are zoned for rural uses. If it's green, that means that it is essentially farmland and, or at least open land, it's not in some way conserved. All that land in blue is, is our public land. So, you know, the green areas were conceivably, you could have a utility-scale solar use in a rural area if it's permitted. Now, the map on the, on the right highlights all of the areas that are not inundated with prime ag soils. So all of those yellow areas are areas that don't have prime agricultural or farmland of statewide importance. If I were to, it's a little hard to see, there are, there are shade, hill shade on that. It's pretty much all of our ridges and hillsides. That's where the majority of it's at. There is some in the flatlands, but it tends to be wet, might be where we have streams and other things running. So we have very, very limited land in our rural areas that actually would be able to be used for solar that wouldn't impact prime farmland. So as I mentioned, there are some municipalities here in the region that do permit primary-scale solar, particularly College, Ferguson, and Patton. College, it's in their industrial district. Ferguson and Patton, they allow these in, well, Ferguson allows it in their rural areas. Patton allows it in several, both their rural as well as several of their, I think, their commercial district, their, the university plan district, some other locations. Overall, though, there's about 25,000 acres that's zoned for this, and that's taking out the public lands. And basically, it's about a combination of all the land in the growth boundary or college and half-moon townships combined, if you want to consider how large the land area is. Again, it's mostly in areas where we've identified as being future agricultural use. Municipal regulations vary. There's no protection, though, of prime ag soils mentioned in any of these regulations. And, and one of the things we've recognized is, we have Harris and Half Moon that do not have any regulations for utility-scale solar, and then we have these other municipalities that do, but there's probably an opportunity there for them to go back and maybe reinvest, you know, investigate these and maybe review a few things, because I think when the ordinances were passed, it was maybe before some of the most recent kind of discussions around this were, were taking place. So what I would like to do next, assuming my computer will move to the next slide, just a, just a quick recap. So what we're trying to do here is, we're trying to put together a plan that kind of sets a policy of how the municipalities can allow for this while meeting both the comp plan and the climate action plan goals. So is there a way to do both? You know, recognizing solar energy is a valuable resource, it's an economically valuable resource to folks here in, in the region, or could be at least, in terms of benefiting the landowners as well as the community as a whole, and we want to find a policy that can capture those benefits but also minimize the risks and impacts. So I'm going to go over a few things in the toolkit. I'm not going to cover everything, just a few highlights, mainly the things, I think, that kind of set apart what we're doing from what other toolkits or other model ordinances have covered. A lot of what we've seen out there, it's very similar. You know, height's going to be regulated the same most everywhere you go, same with glare, same with battery storage. We want to talk about a few things that maybe make our, our toolkit stand out. First is screening and visibility. I think, as we noted, most people don't want these in their backyard. A lot of that has to do with the appearance, having to look out and see the panels. Having a really good set of regulations that very, you know, well-defined buffer requirements, vegetative screening that's going to be native, understory shrubs, canopy trees, all those things, providing that, as well as some ground cover in there as well that's native. So you're, you're trying to hopefully develop some nice habitat surrounding this, this solar facility that you won't necessarily have to look at, which would be beneficial to, to adjacent property owners and, and along the roadway. Another thing to consider is the ecosystem and environmental impacts. As I mentioned, a lot of times wildlife corridors get impacted by these, so one thing obviously is to, again, provide vegetation that's, require vegetation that's native, pollinators, things of that nature that are beneficial. But another thing is that with the security fencing, it should be wildlife permeable. A lot of times, these fences are just straight chain link, but there is, and this is actually a picture of a solar farm with wildlife permeable fencing and a fox going through. It's, it's large enough for small mammals to basically get through the fence. I imagine a deer, if it wants to, is just going to jump the fence. But the key is, it keeps out, you know, people that you don't want to get into your facility, provides a security, keeping people away from what could be dangerous, but it also allows small animals and things to go in there, to have the habitat kind of remain, and provides those wildlife corridors. And this is an example, I think, from North Carolina, where they've done some studies showing that, and there was a lot of other pictures of different wildlife making their way through the fence. That's one of our recommendations for regulations. Another is in terms of where these uses should be allowed. Certainly, we feel like these could be permitted without any real, you know, significant restrictions in industrial zones, as, as I mentioned, that's pretty common. But as we talk about how to protect farmland soils, ultimately, we, we really feel like prime farmland should be protected. So prime soils and farmland of statewide importance shouldn't be utilized unless the project is going to include the co-location of agricultural uses, also known as agrivoltaics, or the project's going to be located in a wellhead protection area where you end up in. where you end up having agricultural uses removed from what might be a high-risk recharge zone. So in that way, at least you're taking potential fertilizers and other pesticides from getting in to the well. And then the last would be municipalities could require the placement of a perpetual agricultural conservation easement on an adjacent property that has the equivalent amount of prime agricultural soils. So there's really kind of three different components of where we feel like this could be done in our rural areas while still keeping with what our comprehensive plan has in terms of agricultural protection. As I mentioned, agrivoltaics, this is a new term to, it's kind of like agratainment. I feel like people are just making stuff up. But agrivoltaics is, it's a little less, you know, it's a little more common, I'll say. There's not as much variety in this. So this is where, again, you have the concurrent use of land for both ag production and energy generation. It's really fascinating. It doesn't have to be where you're having, you know, corn planted between these. It can be sheep that are grazing. There are examples, though, where they've planted tomatoes and peppers and other things underneath panels. And it's really interesting in the sense that it actually improves the plant's output in terms of their productivity, as well as the solar panels. It creates a microclimate underneath the panels that keeps them cooler, so they're more efficient. But, as I mentioned, one of the things we're recommending in this toolkit is that municipalities, if you're going to allow these uses, and I took a page out of the Harris Township playbook on this. It's kind of similar to the recreational resorts. If you want to have a hotel, you have to maintain this large amount of open space. In this case, if you want to have solar panels, you have to also have farming on the property. It's going to, rather than saying that you permit primary-scale solar, you're permitting an agrivoltaics facility. So that would be the recommendation, is municipalities provide. That is a permitted use with a clear definition, requiring an agrivoltaics plan, explaining how they're going to utilize it, whether that's going to be planning it all with pollinators and having bees, or having sheep, or raising soybeans or what have you. But that would be a component of it. And then finally, having minimum requirements. How much of the land needs to be planted? And, you know, and how often you can let it go fallow and things of that nature. So, let's see here. The last thing is decommissioning. This is something we've just heard a lot about through some of our webinars we've attended. It's just one of the things that municipalities could easily get caught in having to spend millions of dollars to decommission one of these sites. So it's important that you have very solid regulations requiring that. They pay in advance or have a bond in advance. I think we've, you know, I can't remember, there was one out in California. I want to say it was in the tens of millions to decommission it. That was how much it was estimated to be. So it's important that it be, you know, you know, well-documented and required by the ordinance. So the next steps for this is, as an agency, the CRPA is completing this study and toolkit. And it will be done, hopefully, near the end of next month and provided to the Land Use and Community Infrastructure Committee in April, as well as to the CRPC. They're going to have a joint meeting, and we'll provide it to them then. And my recommendation tonight would just be, as a planning commission, this is one of the items on your work program, is to consider whether or not you want to allow these type of facilities in the township. As I mentioned, it's been on hold for a couple of years as we were trying to get this study and toolkit done. I know you haven't seen the study and toolkit yet, but if it is something that the commission wants to move forward with once this is, you know, presented in April, it'd be helpful to me if you can let me know what kind of information you'd like me to bring back for the next time this is on your agenda, so we can hopefully provide you with information to have a good discussion. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any. And I will stop sharing my screen.
Questions for Mark?
What is the life span of a solar panel?
It's a great question. The lifespan of a solar panel depends on who you ask, because they have said, at least from, and some of the things we've heard, it's typically that 25 years when they say they start to really decline in terms of efficiency. But there's also some research out there to say that they could very well go as long as 35 or 40 years and still be at, you know, 80% efficiency. I think at some point, obviously, there's a decline in efficiency to the point that it's no longer worth maintaining. But at the same time, you could easily go in and just pull those panels off and put new panels on the array. Once you already have all the piers and all the, kind of the support structure there, that stuff, I don't think is going to go bad anytime soon, because it's only made of aluminum and is pretty well-protected.
Good question. Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Wait, wait, Jeff, hold on, Jeff, Jeff, hold on.
Can you hear me?
No, Jeff, there's a question in the room, hold on. Go ahead, Sadalia.
Thanks. So the second continuation of that is, is there possible, possibility to look at a...
Can you go over the microphone just so everybody can hear you on Zoom?
This is kind of a sustainability question. So is there a possibility to look at a closed-looped design process where you can look at the lifespan of maybe bringing in a different market or industry to kind of create a closed-loop process?
When you refer to a closed-loop process, are you saying, can you clarify that for me a bit?
Sure, absolutely.
Because I've heard in the webinars that we...
Oh, no, no, that's, yep, absolutely. So with the closed-loop process, basically what you're doing is you're creating an opportunity to have sustainability that is just continuous. And so you have less waste, because the products are actually being reused, whether it's going, staying within the local community or outside communities in other state that could be using that same material to create another product or service. And so it's closed loop where there's either zero or close to zero waste.
And this is where I wish that the, you know, other staff member that's been working with me on this, Pam Adams, were here, because she has a background in dealing with recycling a lot at the COG before she was our sustainability planner. As I recall, that's one of the probably bigger concerns about solar is that I don't think there is a known use yet for these, once the lifespan is up. I mean, they're primarily made of glass, but there are other materials within them that I'm not certain that they are recyclable, or they've figured out a way to reutilize them. And that's my, it's limited, but that's my understanding of it. It's not really something they have a way to recycle at this point.
Jeff had a question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Jeff?
Yeah. More to Amy, I guess, is if you were going to allow one of these larger solar, almost seems to be like industrial complexes to come in, which I don't have a problem with, how does that affect the property taxes? Because if you have 200 acres that you can rent right now for $2.50 an acre to a farmer, but now you have 200 acres that you can sign a lease to and get 800 acres, that's $160,000 a year. So as far as property values go then, and taxation on that property, I didn't see any discussion about that. So would that be beneficial to the township? Or are we just not going to do anything about it?
So Mark can actually answer that question, so I'm going to turn to Mark and ask him to answer it.
So Jeff, the answer to that is, it would have an impact on the property taxes. I actually spoke to the Center County assessor here a week or two ago about that question. And what he explained to me was that they can't actually tax the cost of the panels, because they're not, or the panels themselves, because they're not a structure. They're just considered equipment. They could add and tax any buildings that are constructed like those for the battery storage or anything else on site. But he did say that what they're doing, and I guess there's a whole bunch of webinars for tax assessors out there on solar as well, I learned that. It's just not planners talking about it. It sounds like what they're doing is they're taxing it based on the lease value of the lease that has been entered into by the property owner and the developer. Obviously, it's, you know, the developer, hopefully, they're being asked to pay that increase in property taxes, and that's one of the things that I know property owners need to consider. But the example that the assessor gave me was, it was a project in the northern part of the county. And I want to say that it was, I'm probably going to really, you know, butcher the numbers here. It was somewhere in the neighborhood of like, maybe $30 or so an acre for this very rural land in terms of their property taxes at the county level. And it was going to go to something like 300 an acre. So it was multiplying, you know, 10-fold or higher. So there would be an impact to the taxing if one of these were to be built here in the county or in the township.
Well, one of the, one of the issues I had about that is, so if you take some of these areas and they're already in clean and green, which they get a reduction on their property taxes up to 50%, and now they're still in clean and green, but now they're putting solar panels on it and making $180,000 a year, and you're still getting a reduction on the property tax, I think that's something that we should address.
So Jeff, they actually can't be in clean and green and have these facilities. If they're, if you're going to construct or have a utility-scale facility constructed on your farm, and it's in clean and green, typically, you know, a farmer's hopefully going to try to get that developer to pay the back taxes, because they will be required to be paid. Now, they can always enroll whatever's, anything that's left that wasn't put in, like if they don't use the entire property, they can always re-enroll that portion of their farm in clean and green, but the tax break would only apply to that portion that's still farmed.
Thank you.
Good discussion, good questions. Do you have any more?
This is Chuck, I got a question. It would seem prudent that for the decommissioning plan, we'd want to have a fund established to take care of that decommissioning. That would prevent the utility operator from simply throwing up their hands after 20, 30 years and just walking away and leaving it. But does anybody know, if that is a practice, that other communities who have these kind of projects, do they use this?
Yeah, they do, and it's a requirement that they provide surety. Normally, there's going to be a requirement, they provide some, you know, probably physical cash as well as possibly a letter of credit to the municipality to ensure that if they were to decide to cease operation, most municipalities only say, if a facility hasn't been used for a year, it has to be decommissioned at that point. So yes, normally, you're going to have that in an ordinance. The key, though, is to ensure that ordinance allows for updates to that surety, because obviously, over the course of 25 years or 30 years, the cost of decommissioning is going to go up much higher than what they would have initially, you know, provided at the onset when they did the project. So it's really about making sure you're getting a good estimate at the beginning, and then constantly having that cost updated is necessary to ensure the surety is still valid.
I have something to add to that. I don't know if that's necessarily going to be an issue, because when these properties do become decommissioned, I think you're going to find quite a few people who will be standing in line to recycle all this material.
So, are there actually regulations attached to this study that's been done so far?
No, what we have is, we have a series of best practices related to kind of what you're typically going to find in your regulations. So we were asked not to do a model ordinance. So we did, basically, you know, here's different things that most municipalities regulate, and here's our recommendation on how the municipalities go about regulating it. So up to the municipality craft the actual language.
And do you have any differences between the, say, the 200-acre sites versus a 20-acre site at this point?
Not really, no. I mean, we're, overall, our recommendations are going to be able to be utilized no matter the size of it. I think what it comes down to is at the municipal level, if there's different concerns about larger projects, you might have to go and, you know, provide additional regulations if what we have in this toolkit doesn't work. But we wanted to try to provide recommendations that would at least be universally beneficial and kind of set a baseline to kind of meet the goals that we have in the comp plan and the climate action plan at the same time.
Okay. So, and we're going to get this here in another month or two, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I can provide it to you in April at your meeting.
Okay. Well, that sounds good. I mean, this is something that we should definitely use for, to try to accomplish what we have in our work program. And I guess, and then it'll be a moving target, because we're still waiting for the state to come up with regulations for the smaller facilities.
Yeah, and I think that's the key to what we put together here. I think the regulations should apply to both. I don't know that you would have to wait for the state to do that, because if they were to approve community solar, what these regulations are that you would ultimately, if you wanted to draft them, if it's, you know, the township's interest of actually permitting them here, should cover both.
All right, good discussion. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thanks a lot, Mark.
Yep.
Good presentation. All right, I'll move on to the State College Area Connector Project.
So I wanted to give you all an update. Staff met, staff and the supervisors met with representatives from Potter Township, Spring Township, Pendott, and the project consultant team on Valentine's Day to talk about the connector project. We had requested the meeting at the suggestion of a resident, and we said, can we sit down and try to understand where you're coming from in terms of what's the problem that you're trying to solve? And how are you trying to get there? We had a really good discussion, I think it was a really good meeting. Pendott updated the traffic information, the origin and destination information, and they found that 62% of the trucks that are coming west want to go to I-80. But right now, they have to go to State College to go to 99 to get to 80. And they found that 54% of the passenger vehicles that are coming west are coming from Mifflin County, and they're going to State College to go to work, which makes sense. So we discussed with them, it sounds like there's almost like two projects needed, right? There's the one to get the trucks to 80, and then there's the one to deal with all the cars that still want to go to State College. We also discussed with them, people from Potter Township call me a lot about this, which is great. The Potter Township Planning Commission Chairwoman called me, and she said, they're doing this US-15 corridor bypass that is supposed to take the trucks from Harrisburg, you pick up 15 in Harrisburg, straight to 80 and bypass 322. So we asked Pendott, have you considered how this is going to impact your plans? And they said, no. So it's like they plan in a vacuum, which is frustrating. And they also told us, they're getting ready to have another set of public meetings. The first one will be April 5th at Calvary Baptist Church up here from 3:00 to 8:00. And then it'll be April 6th at the Center Hall Fire Company from 3:00 to 8:00. They're going to present those same lines, those big, thick lines, which Dick Decker from Potter Township said, you drew those lines so thick that there are people that thinking they have to sell their houses right now, and you've scared a lot of people, and he's not wrong. But they're going to present those lines again, and then they've been working on, and they showed us, they've been working on re-engineering their thought process, so they go around the impacts. So they showed, you know, our maintenance facility was in the crosshairs of one of their interchanges. They showed how they looked at the median, and how they don't have to have the same median the whole length of the project. So they might do an 18-foot median, and then a 16-foot median, and a 24-foot median, instead of doing their standard, like 60-foot kind of thing, and how they can fit better within alignments to avoid the impacts. Like they talked about avoiding our maintenance facility, avoiding, we have the low-income housing in Jackson Mills Drive, which they have to avoid under federal regulation. Interestingly, when we asked them, they said, oh yeah, we updated all the base layer mapping. And I said, well, how did you update it? Oh, it was from all the comments we got from the public. And I said, well, that doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. They're like, no, we know about your Cedar Run community. And I go, that's not a thing, it's Linden Hall. And they're like, but this Michael guy told us about it. I'm like, that's great, but really Linden Hall is the community. So we discussed with them, having Mark from Harris Township and the Center County Planning Office for Potter and Spring actually review what they have and review the ag security stuff to make sure it is in fact up to date, which they said they would do. They also said, at these public meetings, they're still going to show the old aerial footage. And I said, that, that just confuses people. And they said, well, I don't know where we'll get new aerial photos. And Frank and I were like, Google Maps? Yeah, so they have a long ways to go. The meetings on April 5th and 6th will be important, because it will be the last time before they pick two to three alignments to move forward that they'll get to hear about potential impacts. They have said they are, one of the things they're looking at is, do they want to tunnel through 144? That's one of the options they've been getting prices on. Interesting, the representatives from Spring Township said, the supervisor said, we figure we're invited to the party until you figure out you really can't use our side of things, and we'll get dropped from the invite list. And Pendott said, there are a lot of impacts over that way. But they said after this next round of meetings, they said two to three alignments will kind of rise to the top. I feel a lot better about this project after meeting with them, because I think they understand, and I think they're taking another good look. They met with the folks in Collier. If you've been down 322 that way, they have Dean Ball's phone number on the billboards outside of their development. And they've met with them. And the folks in Collier got them to rethink using the existing alignment in some way. Because the folks in Collier said, instead of moving the road back here and buy... Because the folks in Collier said, instead of moving the road back here and bisecting our farms, isn't there a way you can use what you have existing? And they said, we have a lot of right-of-way. And they looked at Route eighty-three going down towards Harrisburg. If you go eighty-three south, they actually, I guess it's north maybe, I don't know. But they have, they did a project where they made it from four lanes to six lanes, didn't take a ton of extra right-of-way because they had a lot there, but they shortened the median, and that helped, and it works really well. So they're looking at stuff like that. They're looking at, is there ways to jig and jot around that gets them what they want, where they want to do? We all said, though, like whatever happens with the trucks, if they do one forty-four and the trucks go that way, we still have a hundred thousand cars coming our way for football and special events, and then all the people that are coming in for work. So it's almost like two projects, it's like two problems they have to solve. They're only going to do one project, so.
How much traffic would the Route fifteen project take off?
So that's the question. No one seems to know. And from what the woman in Potter Township told me, that project's supposed to be done in the next year or two. And, you know, the whole idea is those trucks, and it was funny, I was in Hershey two weeks ago when I was coming back on a Friday, and I was shocked at the number of trucks on three-twenty-two the whole way. Because they're hauling to get to eighty to go wherever they need to go. And I guess the other thing is trucks would use the turnpike more if the turnpike wasn't so expensive. So it was, I mean, it was probably the most positive meeting, I think. Tom Zilla was there from Center Region, and I think Tom was even impressed that it didn't turn into, don't put it in my township, put it in that township. And we all kind of talked about how we didn't want to fight. How, like, when this happened years ago, Harrison Potter really were pitted at each other, and we don't want to do that. So, you know, I'm probably more hopeful than I was back in September.
So is the Turnpike Commission thinking about that at all? I mean, is it put onto there?
Yeah, I don't know. That's the other problem with all of this, right, is that we're up here, there's other decisions being made in projects in other districts, and they don't seem to communicate with each other. And I don't know who's picking up the ball and going to the Turnpike Commission and saying, hey, do something to get some of these trucks to go. I don't know that anybody's doing that. So it is a little frustrating that way.
Anybody have any questions for Amy? Okay, so what times did you say the April fifth and sixth meetings were?
They're from three PM to eight PM. April fifth is at Calvary Church, and April sixth is at the Center Hall Fire Hall.
Three to eight?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, it's all five hours?
Yes.
Wow.
It's open house like it was at the hotel. We're not going to give you a cookie.
I'm easy.
Okay, well, thank you. I guess next on the agenda, we can talk about our agenda for March.
We actually have the Bull Avenue corridor need study first.
I'm sorry. Yep, skip that.
So after we discussed the road diet, and remember, we took that out for public comment, and the public comment we got back was, most of it was, this isn't a great idea, we don't understand the need, this seems to just be for bicyclists. So the supervisor said, you know, there's still a need along Bull Avenue for some corridor improvements. There's still some things like extending left turn lanes so that we could change some of the timing at the traffic signals, looking at taking out slip lanes, looking at this intersection at Main and Bull Avenue, so there's some stuff we could do there. So they asked the traffic engineer and myself and Tom Zilla from the Center Region Planning Agency to sit down and consider a need study. So the supervisors heard the proposed need study at their meeting last Monday. I included all the information in your packet because what we're planning on doing now is sending out a survey to the supervisors and to you guys, and probably to the Parks and Rec Committee because we're trying to create recreational corridors in the township, and let you guys rank these projects. Because the outcome we're trying to get to is, Rob, our traffic engineer, will put together a need study that will have, you know, actual drawing sketches and cost estimates that I can then pull out and use to go apply for grant funding. And so it's some elements of the road diet, but it's not like the bicycle parts of the road diet, it's like the safety parts of the road diet, and it's some stuff from the small area plan. And we think it'll just, in general, improve safety through that whole corridor. So keep an eye out because you'll be getting, as soon as Rob gets that survey together, you guys will get that survey to vote on. And Bruce had suggested that we kind of group all the similar projects together. So these are all turning lane projects, or these are all traffic signals or whatever, so it'll be a little bit easier for you guys.
So how would the need study itself be funded?
The need study is going to be funded by the township.
Okay, and they'll have an estimate for that as well when it comes?
Once we have the scope hammered out, yep, he will give us an estimate to do that. And then one of the things we also discussed was, we desperately need to update the traffic counts along Bull Avenue because everything has changed with the pandemic. And the last ones we had were sort of pre-pandemic.
Okay, and you're saying the idea is like this, we would take these things that's on the yellow sheet and rank these?
He'll send you a survey, yep, and you'll rank how you feel like your top priorities, and then we'll move. We talked in our meeting, Tom, Rob and I, about we should set up like the low-hanging fruit because Pendot's going to come through here in the next year or two and pave Bull Avenue. So are there projects we could piggyback on with Pendot to do some safety improvements there? And then the middle fruit, and then sort of the long-term stuff, like the turning lane at Bullsburg Pike and Church Street would be a long-term goal.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thanks a lot, Amy. All right, okay, so now we can go on to discuss the agenda for March.
I think we, I talked with Chris. Next month, we'll come back to the residential stuff that we were looking at. And also, Chris has asked, and we just didn't frankly have any time between the village parking stuff and also the stuff we've been doing with the rural stuff. We'll come back and revisit kind of where we are and kind of give you a timeline, like this is what's done. Because hopefully by then, the rural stuff will all be adopted. This is what's done, this is kind of where we're going, this is what's happening next. And then there were some ancillary regulations, you know, that we talked about, looking at the landscape buffering regulations, which the Shade Tree Commission's going to take a crack at first and kind of work in concert with you. And then also the, kind of the corridor overlay regulations and some other things. So we'll get you on a good timeframe so you kind of know where we are and where we're going and when we think we're going to get there.
Okay.
And I think, Todd, do we have any plans, do you know, for March?
I'm probably going to have to give you my candid answer if some plans actually make some progress. We might see something, but no progress has been made in quite some time.
Okay.
Okay, reports. Todd, is there any zoning permit that we need to circulate?
Yeah, I actually managed like three months of zoning permit reports. And I think they are, I think they are there at the meeting if you want to take a look at them. And everybody else, if you get the chance to stop in, I guess tomorrow the weather's not supposed to be too bad, but after that, it might be a little heavy.
Okay, all right. CRPC, Amy, do you have any report you'd like to make?
Hi, everyone. The CRPC met on February third for establishing the meeting schedule and organizational structure for the year. We will continue to meet in a hybrid fashion indefinitely until we do differently and much like we're doing here tonight with Harris Township. So if you ever would like to join us, it's easy to do so. And I'm happy to share information and links, but also Marcella Hoffman is our organizer, so you're welcome to join us. We also had the rural rezoning materials come before the CRPC for comment, there were no comments. And so I believe it is on its way back to Harris Township. So I don't have any updates beyond that, other than there were no comments. We heard from Patton Township, who is doing some work on bike parking requirements. We also received an update on accessory use. And so there are presentations and fact sheets associated with some of these things on the information sheet that Marcella puts together. This was mailed out to the Planning Commission on February eighth. If you did not receive it and you would like to do so, I'm happy to send it to you. You also can find this on the CRPC website. Our next meeting will be March third. That is all, thank you.
Thanks. Hi, Amy. The CCMPO Technical Committee, we did get an email from George Harrigan. I think it was yesterday sometime. I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments, if they got a chance to look at that. So I'll go ahead and move on to the Spring Creek Watershed Commission.
Yeah, we had a meeting last month, we meet every other month, and we've started meeting again in mixed, virtually, and in face-to-face. We had the election of new officers, Paul Tekkak out of College Township is the new chair, and Joanne Testaverse is the vice chair. And we went through, had a brief presentation on, apparently there's been, there was some fire retardant that was put into the watershed several years ago from the airport, and that's being cleaned up. So, and the water had seeped, the contamination had seeped into Benner Spring a little bit. But I don't think that, we had a full presentation on the challenges of that chemical. The Phase Three approach of implementation of the One Watershed Plan was approved by the municipalities, and they're putting together a technical group to, as a working group, to implement it, so.
Thanks a lot, Bob. Village Parking Committee.
I can provide the update for Mr. Klob. The Village Parking Committee has had two pretty interesting meetings the last two months. In January, they focused on hearing about the Small Area Plan because they had really never talked about that before, so we gave, Mark gave them a good overview of the Small Area Plan. In February, we had done considerable, not we, Mark had done a considerable amount of research on parking regulations across the state of Pennsylvania in comparable communities. So they looked at a mix of boroughs and townships and brought back those ideas to the Parking Committee. And so some of the things they talked about were, there were some communities where they allow you to use front footage to count towards your off-street parking requirement. Certainly, the shared parking came up, joint parking, that kind of thing. So next month, they're actually changing their meeting date because the Fire Hall's not available on their actual meeting date. But next month, they're going to invite representatives from the Bullsburg Fire Company and the two churches to come to talk about if shared parking is actually something that would be feasible. It's funny, one of the things we talked about was that for all these years, every single plan for the Village mentions sharing parking with the churches and the Fire Halls, and nobody ever asked them. So it's probably time to have that conversation. So we're going to have that conversation. And then the Board of Supervisors actually just approved, we have found an Amishman who's going to take down the pole shed for us, and then we're going to have a survey done and have a plan presented to them in March for what that back parking lot would look like. We're only probably going to be able to get thirteen spaces back there, but that's more than we have now, so, in terms of parking lots. So they have a lot going on. Their goal is to have a report with, like, we talked about making a toolkit with some suggestions for the supervisors, with having that ready for their June meeting. They are, as part of their meeting next month, they're also going to invite the property owners on the diamond, who truly have no off-street parking, to the meeting. Patricia Roguski from Raleigh-on-Ming was at the meeting last month to talk with them about some of us. Because those are the properties that have the most hardship. Those are the properties that truly have an issue because they can't really change hands, change uses. So they're, I mean, they're plugging away. I think Dave, I think Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like they're getting somewhere, so that's good.
Sounds like it's progress. Past, it's like...
Yeah, it's further than I think it's ever gotten before.
I think I'm astounded the fact that, you know, we've always had committees, but nobody's ever asked what the composition of the committee is.
Yeah.
It always just, I think it was kind of common sense that we wouldn't ask those people to sit in on those committees and...
Yeah. Yeah, I still marvel at, we never asked the Fire Company or the churches, we just wrote it into every plan. Like, it goes back, what, twenty, thirty years? Oh, we'll just park there, okay!
Has there been any mention of having a fee in lieu of parking for those that can't provide it?
We haven't talked about that yet. So that's something, that's actually, can we write that down? That's actually something we should talk about. It was funny, some of the places, like, we got suggestions from the committee, and a lot of the boroughs are much more like Bull Avenue than they are like the Village. They're more commercial, and a lot of those places have parking garages. So the big joke has been that we're going to put in a two-deck parking garage back here and, you know, take care of all of our problems, and the supervisors keep telling me they're going to make me be the meter maid. Like, it's not a thing.
Sounds like them.
Yeah. Frank, actually.
Is that tenants?
Said, if you want me to leave, you can make me be the meter maid.
So, well, okay, we want to talk about any other recent actions by the Board of Supervisors then?
Just that they approved the Act 537 Facilities Plan Special Study, which is for downtown State College for Calderway and Atherton Street. And I think that's about all they've, oh, and the public hearing for the rural rezoning stuff will be March fourteenth. It'll be here because we have generally better internet here than we do at the Fire Hall. And I anticipate people will come on Zoom. I think that's finally ready to, like, I think we're finally going to get that done. I feel much better about it. The supervisors seem much happier about it after the joint meeting, so I think they were pleased with what was presented to them, so I think we're finally there.
Like, seven o'clock or?
Seven-thirty on the fourteenth.
Okay, on the fourteenth. That's great. Okay, is there anything else that we need to bring up tonight before I take a motion to adjourn? Anybody care to make that motion?
So Luke.
Thanks, Bob. We need to vote on that?
Yes.
Yeah, you can.
Technically.
All right, I'll go ahead and second it. All right, okay, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Say aye.